That's some OJT right there.
That would be uncomfortable.
Can you right in the nick of time tonight? Okay. City manager, are we ready to go? City clerk, interim city manager.
Assistant city manager.
Let me get my titles down. City clerk, we ready to go? Okay. All right. With that, we will start our Selma City Council regular meeting, July 6, 2021. I show the time is exactly 6:00 PM in the Selma City Council chambers. The teleconference phone number is 1301-715-8592. The ID is 893-9364-5270. The password is 2021. When on the phone, if you wish to address council during the public comment portion of the agenda, press star nine to raise hand and we will select you from the meeting queue. Press star six to unmute and mute yourself. Just a reminder, on March 17, 2020, Governor Newsom issued the executive order N2920, which still stands, which allows a local legislative body to hold public meetings via teleconferencing and to make public meetings accessible telephonically or otherwise electronically to all members of the public seeking to observe and to address the local legislative body pursuant to executive order N2920. Please be advised that some or all of the city of Selma Council will participate in meetings in the meeting via teleconference. Tonight, our invocation will be led by Pastor Joel Alvarez of the Iglesia Antioquia.
Antioquia, it could be easier, but you guys don't pack, mayor. Good evening, mayor and city council. Let's pray. Your word teaches us, Heavenly Father, if my people who are called by my name humble themselves and pray and seek your face and turn their their face from wicked ways, you will heal our lands, Heavenly Father. Your word teaches us, Heavenly Father, that you will not only heal our lands, but you will hear our prayers. And we're calling upon you this evening so you can take control of this meeting, Heavenly Father. And we put everything in your hands, asking you for direction and asking you for your Holy Spirit to guide us and give us wisdom as we do your works. In the name of Jesus Christ, we thank you and we love you with all heart and all your people say amen.
Amen. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Hold the roll, please.
Councilmember Garrett.
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro.
Here.
Councilmember Trehu.
Here.
Mayor Protemcho.
Here.
Mayor Robertson.
Here. Potential conflicts of interest, any council member has a potential conflict of interest may announce the item now and recuse themselves from discussing or voting on the matter. Oral communications, at this time, any member of the public may address the city council on any issue within their jurisdiction, but not on the agenda. No action or discussion will take place on any items raised during oral communications. Any items of interest may be referred to the interim city manager for further review. Speakers are asked to limit their remarks to three minutes. Would anyone like to address the council tonight at this time in the chambers? Come on up, Jackie.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jackie Garcia. I'm a resident of Selma and a small business owner here in Selma. Tonight, I'd like to address you as a board member of Selma Little League. Some of you may already know, but for those of you who do not, Selma Little League has been given the honor of hosting our first ever state tournament. This tournament is set to begin this Saturday, July 10, and run through Friday, July 16. This is a NorCal state tournament for the intermediate 50-70 division. This division is composed of 12 and 13 year olds. And there will be no World Series for this division. So this is it. This is the biggest tournament these boys will be playing in. This year, Selma will also have a team playing in the championship. Very proud of our own 50-70 team who have won the Division 7, I'm sorry, Division 10 championship and Section 7 championship. So both hosting and having a team playing in this tournament is a very first for Selma. Our mayor, our police chief, and our fire chief have all agreed to throw out a ceremonial first pitch. In addition, we have secured our guest speaker to be Jaime Serna, a former Little League player and MLB player to be a guest speaker. This tournament will be bringing teams to Selma to represent each of the seven sections from the entire Northern California region. This region stretches as far north as the Oregon border and as far south as Kern County. All counties east and west of this, so to the coast and all the way to the Nevada and Arizona border. What that means is this tournament will bring in at minimum of 100 players and their families and umpires to the city of Selma along with additional spectators for three to seven days. I'm here tonight along with several other board members of our Little League to request the city's help in ensuring that all the players and their families, along with the umpires from up and down the state, have a time to remember here in Selma. We're asking the council to approve a sponsorship of this tournament and donate a minimum of $1,000 to the Selma Little League. This will help us offset the cost of running this tournament for things such as field prep, supplies, souvenir bags for each player, coaches' opening breakfast, pins for the boys to trade with other players, and other incidentals. I believe that each of the council members, as well as business owners who are members of the chamber and other city officials, were emailed a sponsor letter this morning. Some of you, I was able to find at the July 3 event and give you one of my sponsor letters there. So we are requesting donations of any kind and in kind from anyone who is willing to donate. We generally appreciate any and all support that anyone and everyone can give us. We hope that we can get the council's approval of our request to demonstrate the city's commitment not only to our youth, but our entire community. This tournament will definitely affect the entire community. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Jackie, and thanks for all your selfless time of everybody that works with Little League. There's so much time and effort and love that goes into it. It's so nice to see Selma back on the map in a really big way after COVID. Can't wait for this weekend. And I was one of those you got, you know, after the July 3. And, you know, we're donating, absolutely, in terms of what the city can do. Usually, the city waves fees. It's not an agenda item, so I don't know if we could approve, you know, any kind of donation tonight, but if you want to send something to the city making a request, you could certainly do that.
Okay.
All right.
Try to do that, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And best of luck. See you Saturday morning.
I'll be there.
Jackie, you can come by my office and I'll donate $100 to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And you could pick up our check when you're seeing Sarah.
Alrighty. Thank you very much.
All right. Does anyone else have anything they would like to communicate to the council at this time? City clerk, oh, no, we do it in chambers.
My name is Robert Cortez. My name is Robert Cortez. I live at 1751 McCall. You had a construction on Nebraska between Mitchell and near the gas station. And they came out very good. The only thing I'm asking here is to put a bike lane in that little area from maybe the end of Ringo Park all the way to the gas station. It's wide enough to put one in there, but I don't see anything put in there as far as a bike lane. It is wide enough. I go through there all the time. I use the bike, but I thought it would be good to have a bike lane put there. And also, maybe, it's kind of dark in that area, but put a city light right in the middle in between Ringo Park and the gas station. Right in the middle would be very helpful to put a city light there because if you go through there, it's very dark. And I don't want to say that somebody could be hit there, you know, it's just a possibility they could. I think it would be very helpful to add those two things there as far as safety wise. Thank you.
Thanks for your input. Assistant city manager, do we have any striping, any funds in the street fund for bike lane strippings? I know you were in charge of that project.
I can look at our ATP plan and see if it's part of there and then we can look at a funding source for that. As far as the light, given that's an open parcel, there's no sidewalk, there's no electrical, there's no conduit. It'd be a lot more expensive to add that light, though. We'll assess it.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers have any comments they would like to make at this time? City clerk, do we have anyone on Zoom who would like to comment or on the phone?
To the callers we have on Zoom, please use star nine to raise your virtual hand. For those that are using the Zoom application, please use the raise hand feature and we will select you from the meeting queue. At this time, Mayor Robertson, we have no callers with their hands raised.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to special presentations. And our first presentation tonight is going to be for the California Justice Leaders Program presentation. Mr. Sergio Coronel, would you like to step up and deliver your presentation?
Okay, so we are California Justice Leaders and my name is Sergio Coronel.
And I'm Stephen Hensley.
And today we will be presenting our mission, our mission statement and our purpose.
So as California Justice Leaders, we are individuals that are working to help those that are currently and formerly incarcerated in the Division of Juvenile Justice. We're operating on a credible messenger model. So we are system impacted individuals who come from these same communities. Help these individuals who are incarcerated or who have been incarcerated to accomplish goals such as school, work, and that sort of thing. So we facilitate that in the community. We connect these individuals to resources and we help them achieve any goals that they might have in regards to reintegrating or moving forward toward honorable discharge.
Next slide, please. Some of the work that we do, as you mentioned, honorable discharge, it's basically a program, a newly introduced program beginning in 2020. All the members are formerly incarcerated one way or another. And this is to try to persuade or mentor a lot of the young adults inside the Division of Juvenile Justice, formerly known as CY, California Youth Authority. You know, some of the facilities where we do a lot of our one-on-one sessions, I've mentored over 70 young adults. Majority of them, portion of them, I'll say 70% of them are gang affiliated one way or another. You either have northerners, bulllocks, southerners, Chris Bloods, or some of the new dropout gangs that are coming from the prison institution into the Division of Juvenile Justice.
Okay, and we'll move to the next slide now. So who are the youth? And here on the screen, we have a little bit of statistics regarding who the youth are, the general population, and anything that's kind of relevant to quantitative statistics on their unique population. So as you can see, we have the average age is around 19. The majority of those that are currently incarcerated are males. And they have all these different case factors. Some of them are able to go to fire camps and reintegrate in that way and help serve the state of California to put out wildfires. And it's really important that we come at this with an approach that is qualitative, that is unique to each individual and establishes a continuum of care and mentorship based on who they are as individuals. So, and we will go to the next slide.
So what is required for a lot of these young men? And this program is only dedicated to those that have been or currently inside the Division of Juvenile Justice. Basically, they have to be out in the community 18 months, completed probation, and obviously committed to a life of change. This is highly important in terms of job employment for a lot of them. So a lot of the young adults that I deal with are between the ages of 13 and 25. Majority of them are 16, at times 21. A lot of them, again, gang affiliated. And so me personally, myself, I grew up in a small town in Parley. I myself was involved with gangs and I managed to pull away through a support system. This is what really got me to get away from that lifestyle. So now what I'm trying to do is give back and mentor a lot of these young men. And so through honorable discharge, they have an opportunity when they complete the program to earn a certificate approved by the state of California. Once they get the certificate, then I help them through a petition process where they could go ahead and seal the record.
Okay, and we'll go to the next slide. So as we can see on the screen, these are some accomplishments of California Justice Leader members. And to really view these as accomplishments is incredible based on how many individuals the members have done outreach toward. So, I mean, with individuals that are currently eligible for honorable discharge, over 175 have been reached. And nearly 70 adults have been helped to complete or work toward their reentry goals. And a lot of these goals are not easy to work toward because there's small barriers that are not really seen or thought about when you're thinking about reintegrating networking in the community or something as simple as getting a job. Getting an ID or birth certificate, social security card, navigating that simple process, which most of us were able to do, but to individuals who haven't had that exposure as young individuals that are coming into the community now as adults, it's really difficult and those things are required. And so for them to accomplish these goals and to work towards these goals and to make the strides that they're making is tremendous.
Next slide, please. Now, there's been an expansion with the California Justice Leaders Model. We've expanded into juvenile home. Currently, now we're serving juveniles in juvenile home between the ages of 18 through 35. Currently, right now, I'm in the DJJ realignment process with probation, so I'm kind of consulting for them in order, you know, letting them know what's going on in the community in terms of the gangs, in terms of what are they going to do because DJJ is going to close. The last day, this July, I'm thinking July 24, 26, will be the last time that you will see a lot of the juveniles from juvenile house being committed to the Division of Juvenile Justice. The Division of Juvenile Justice will close down in 2023 through SBA 23. That is a bill signed by the governor. And a lot of what happened during those times with DJJ, DJJC had us a tremendous status. The status that DJJ holds, it grooms a lot of these young men to become the future prison gang leaders of the big organizations like the Núñez Familia, the Mexican Mafia, Aaron Brog, the Hood, and so on. So DJJ in itself, with that status, a lot of these young men, when they come back into the community, a lot of these young individuals here, like, let's say, Selma, Parley, Really, or Fresno, they see them as some type of major influence, a big, you know, old gang, the big homie that came out of the, that did time at the Gladiator School is what it's called. Now, what I'm trying to do is trying to remove that image. So this is part of the work that I'm doing in order for, so juvenile home in Fresno will become the new DJJ. In order to do that, it's going to take a lot of tremendous mentoring from formerly incarcerated people or battle warriors like myself, somebody like Steven, that could able to guide the whole process and really guide them in a way that what happened at DJJ won't repeat itself.
Okay, and we'll move to the next slide. So this is just an image of the honorable discharge certificate that's awarded to an individual who has completed all of the requirements to get the certificate. And this certificate doesn't serve to seal one's record or to expunge anything, but instead it serves as validation that one has made progress in reintegrating, that one has obtained a status as a person who has been rehabilitated and effective and productive member of the community. And so this certificate helps with processes such as record sealing, which opens the door for things such as obtaining professional licenses, going to school, and just fulfilling one's civic duty as a member of society. And so with that, we will move forward.
Some of the work that I'm doing now, I'm currently in the Crimology Masters Program at Fresno State. A lot of my research deals with gangs. Reason why it was a big problem when I was growing up and it's still a big issue. It's one of the greatest challenges that I face in terms of doing case managing with a lot of these younger individuals. They come back into the community, a lot of these young kids, 16, 17 year olds that I had to pick up off the streets because they were assaulted by other gang members because they went out of the gang life. A lot of these young men are out here in the community, some of them running away. Some of them never say anything and some of them are just looking at an opportunity in a way out of their neighborhood. But one of the things that I've noticed, gang graffiti has been a big issue. Next slide, please. This picture here was taken here in Selma at an alley. Selma, in my research that I did in terms of gang graffiti, Selma came fourth behind, you know, smaller cities like Oroce in Tulare County. You had Cutler and Orange Cove in Selma were one of the worstest ones in Fresno County in terms of the gang graffiti. So what I'm urging is, one of the big issues in order to address this whole gang issue, it's the messages displayed on these walls speak volumes. I've done surveys. I did a survey in here on elementary, first grade all the way to sixth. I showed them images. I showed them images of gang graffiti, and all these little kids knew what gang graffiti was. They were afraid, intimidated. Ninety-eight percent of the hands went up when I showed them these images. There's some of my research findings in terms of gang graffiti. I had crossouts, territory, rest in peace, gang members, police dis, uh, graffiti removal, territory, images, um, in terms of the, the groupies, the bullocks were the majority here in Fresno County. Um, and, you know, these are some of my findings and my quantitative research at Fresno State. And, you know, it depicts a lot of gang violence, a lot of what's going on. And so I just urge, you know, something needs to be done in terms of removing the gang graffiti that's out here in these communities. Next slide, please. This is just, uh, some of more of my research findings. Um, it advertised a lot of the constitutions they created, uh, brainwashing a lot of these young men. Um, a lot of this is territorial. There's recent research that came out, that gang graffiti is associated with, with a spike in, in crime. Why is this, there's conflict out there. It's messages, there's a conversation going on. These, these messages out in these communities, you know, create a, a sense of a territory and it generates conflict. If you have a different gang coming out, coming in and crossing it out. A lot of the kids see this, my little sister is here, my little sister sees these messages also on the walls. You know, she asked me questions. Now I'm here to urge, you know, and it's, something needs to be done to eliminate this, all these communities, right? Next slide, please.
And so what we've done, apart from our service as California Justice Leaders and AmeriCorps, is we've created Youngsters for Change. And what Youngsters for Change is, is it's an organization that's based on reaching out to underserved or underrepresented, um, individuals, groups, communities, rural areas where individuals might not be aware of all these different resources and things that are made available to them. And so what we're trying to do is go into disadvantaged areas where we see individuals that are struggling um, with whatever it may be, whether it be, um, gang-related issues or perhaps some financial burden, and we're trying to spread a message of positivity while also offering direct services, um, assisting in getting documents like birth certificates, social security cards, passing out whatever supplies we're able to gather, such as shoes for job interviews, um, bikes, food, and just spread this message and these resources. Um, and I know how incredibly helpful they are. I mean, when I was seventeen, I was arrested, taken to juvenile hall. I was that kid in the system. Um, seventeen onwards, I spent six years in state prison in the state of California. And when I was released, I had nowhere to go. I had nothing to my name. I had no one to help me. I slept on a park bench for over a month. I had the two hundred dollars that the state gave me, and I had no idea how to move forward. I had no idea how to get my ID or anything to get a job. And so what we're doing is we're trying to eliminate those barriers. We are trying to be those guides, those credible messengers to help those struggling in the same ways. So they don't say, I want to go back to jail, I want to go back to prison, I want to go back to the life that I was living. And that's what we're here to do today is just to spread that message, to bring awareness, and to thank you for allowing us to bring this forward and show you what we're doing. And so Youngsters for Change, Sergio and I started it. Um, as Fresno State students, we're carrying it forward. We're getting a lot of community support. A lot of organizations are coming beside us, and I think that it's gonna have a really positive outlook.
Yes, and I think, um, Youngsters for Change is based on a model, a credible messenger model. So somebody like myself, you know, I currently have a lot of DJJ youth inside, some of it out in the community. And so what I'm looking to do is build a lot of strong young men that left the gang life that could go out there and also mentor other young men out in the communities. So I think this would create a powerhouse in terms of building, you know, young role models out in these communities and, and hopefully, you know, make a dent in terms of the gang violence, in terms of, you know, gangs. Because as we're having this meeting, um, older gang members are also recruiting and having meetings within themselves out in these communities. So something needs to challenge them and something needs to really direct these young men towards another pathway, right? Pathway of success. Thank you for your time.
Steven, Sergio, thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, does any, um, one from council have any questions?
I have a quick question, um, Sergio or Mr. Hensley. Just, I just was curious, those photos you took with the graffiti, were those just recent?
Graffiti images, um, twenty-twenty, between twenty-eighteen, twenty-twenty, but I have a lot of recent ones in this year, twenty-twenty-one. And those are very graphic in terms of the, uh, you know, uh, for example, the penal for, uh, the murder court one eighty-seven towards another group, right? So there's a lot of messages, especially out here in Salma. Um, they're there, they're displayed. I see a lot of kids walking through them. And, you know, something needs to be done about that. Um, and, and also, I wanted to bring up the issue of, uh, I brought this to the mayor's attention last time, the streets on, on Dinuba Adventure, Con Street, some of the streets are, are broken, um, holes in them, they need to be repaired. They need, these kids need new streets. There's no speed bumps there. Uh, my little sister's dog got hit by a car, speeding car through. There is no speed bumps in that streets. And so, you know, a lot of the kids' perception matters within your community. And so a lot of these kids and a lot of these guys are recruiting young kids to become gang members. You know, a lot of these kids see no hope in the community, see nothing changing. So, you know, I urge that something is done about the gang graffiti and the infrastructure in some of these areas.
The only reason I ask is because Salma, we do have a fund where they can go out, if they report graffiti, they go out and try to clear that within seventy-two hours. Is that correct, Isaac? Something like that?
Yeah, a lot of what happens is a lot of the community doesn't report these things. When it's gang-related,
Yeah.
nobody wants to say anything. So it needs, it needs another form of group to step up and do it for them, right? A lot of Mexican communities, Spanish-speaking communities, farm working communities, they see it in the walls, they're not gonna report it.
Yeah, I have a couple. Um, are these considered transitional youths? Would they be considered transitional youths, do you know?
Transitional youths.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking about the homeless. There's, there's some properties that we have coming up, um, where I work in Fresno. And so I'm thinking about, you know, maybe, um, getting you in contact with some of them, you know, to try and help with housing or anything like that, because we do have some programs. I mean, it's not guaranteed that they're gonna get housed, but, you know, that would be, um, and that's one of the requirements is a, being a transitional youth.
A lot of them, you know, they have single-parent households or sometimes no home at all. So I think that would be great in terms of.
The other, yeah, if you can leave a card with, um, with Raina, please. Um, yeah, and then when, when they are in these programs, are they followed by like a case manager or a probation officer? Or do they have any type of assistance with them to follow them through the process?
Yeah, so throughout their, um, process of reintegration, what we try to do is not just facilitate the accomplishing of their goals, but also be there as an added layer of support as they work toward them. So we set small incremental goals based on what they tell us their goals are, and we'll guide them through that. And to be eligible for honorable discharge, you have to have been, um, off of probation and in the community for a fairly considerable amount of time. Um, over a year, I believe it's a year and a half. So throughout that time, we follow them, um, we assist them with resources, reentry resources, such as if they need transitional housing, we try to secure that. Um, I know in Fresno, there's a lot of different resources or new programs developing like Project Room Key and, um, different sorts. And then in Fresno, also, there's a lot of youth that are at one of the safety camps. We are not invisible, um, is operating. And these youth are struggling because of incarceration, because they come back to communities where they may have been a gang member before and they no longer are now. And so they have nowhere to go because it's dangerous for them. And so we try to facilitate that um, through the duration of their reentry plan until they're stable and they feel like they can move forward on their own.
And so with that, it comes with navigators. Do you guys have navigators for them?
We are the navigators. Yeah.
And then they have to currently be in the DJJ system?
No, so we're able to work with individuals that are currently in DJJ, formerly in DJJ, and anyone who is impacted by the justice system as a youth. So for instance, if they went to juvenile hall, maybe like five or six years ago, or even recently, we're able to help them. The only thing they're not eligible for is honorable discharge because it's, um, DJJ-specific.
Okay, yeah, if you can leave, um, the information for me, please.
I, I want to say a couple of things. Uh, uh, thank you, guys. You guys are doing a great job. We, in the city of Salma, we, we're, every city is unique. Every city has, you know, a, a battle. But it was, it was nice to hear the Little League come up before you guys. It would have been nice to have you guys and then the Little League. Because the Little League is one of our detours, right? And all, all the sports and everything is detour. But you guys carry a very important, uh, tool. And the tool that you have is the analysis that you guys are doing. All the number crunching, all the information, it would be vital for our city. It's vital, but it pertains to Salma. If you guys can relay that to us in any way, I don't know where, how, but if you guys could get it to the city, that's valuable information. If it's pertaining to our city, our, our sphere of influence, it's, it's, it's important. And, you know, a lot of, um, research that's done around the valley, one of the most key components is analysis. It's number crunching, it's understanding. And when we start as a city, the municipal government, if we could join forces by getting that information, then we can attack it with our department heads, our people, and you guys might have whereabouts, where the graffiti is at, we don't know. That's inform, that's important information. But I, 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 I value you guys and I thank you guys, and I'm so happy the Little League's here also because that means that we are in one way, working with our group too. So, thank you guys so much.
You know, it just shows that, um, there's hope when you do have the Little League and Salma does really well. It has a Boys and Girls Club. It has a Salma Legacy Youth Center. It, it provides for kids that are at risk at that age. But what about between eighteen and thirty-five? Not a lot, you know, so you are really on the sharp edge of the spear when people are coming out. And, uh, it's, it's really important, extremely important and vital what you do. My question is, you know, when, when do you come across these individuals? While they're in the system or after they've been released for that eighteen-month period, or when do you get to them?
So we get to them at various stages. So currently, as for me myself, I'm working with two individuals who are in DJJ in the Stockton facility, and I'm working with them on reentry goals. But we also come across individuals through our different networks in the community, the organizations that we partner with, work for. I work alongside the ACLU and, um, Root and Rebound and various organizations that connect me to youth that they're aware of. And, um, Sergio as well, works with a lot of different organizations that help bring these youth forward to him. Uh, and then we also have our placement site of Focus Forward where we have, um, a steady flow of individuals that need support, need mentoring, and need these services.
Well, Sergio, it's nice that you brought your mom and your sister here. They should both be, uh, very proud of you, what you've done and what you're helping, giving back to the community. Hopefully, you can help these young men and women become productive members again of the community. And I encourage you, if you haven't already, to stay in close touch with our, our police chief, our police department in our city. In terms of graffiti, Councilmember Gara was, was right on. If there's graffiti, the city can go out and remove that if it's on public property. If it's not, you know, they have to get permission. But there's even a way of doing that if the property owners don't remove it in a certain amount of time. But these are important things, and I think, last but not least, I think what we talked about, you called me on the roads, on those roads that you mentioned that are off of Dinuba that are in horrible shape that the city does need to address and show that we care about you, you care about us, right? It's a circular flow. Um, but you also said you help these kids, some of these young people, with their facial tattoos. You know, it's hard to get a job, right? When you have facial tattoos or some very visible tattoos. Can you describe just a little bit of what you do to help folks in that situation?
A lot of these young men, they have a lot of face tattoos, gang-related tattoos. They came to me and told me, I want these tattoos removed. A lot of them were inside. They come back to the community and they become targets, right? Some of them don't want to come out of their house, go to a certain, um, agency that's gonna look for, for jobs because of the tattoos. So what I did through Youngsters for Change, we got connected with an organization out from Vaiselio. And so they've been facilitating, you know, the process in terms of removing, um, the tattoos from their face. Uh, per, per one procession, it's twelve hours of community service. But we made it, we made it, we made the process easier with our organization that we co-founded. So there's no requirements at all. They just need to come and say, you know, I want these removed. I really understand a lot of the situation that they go through. So I, we didn't, we didn't put no requirements. They just come, we get the process going. Um, before us, a lot of different agencies or, or different places, they were specific to certain counties, or they had all these requirements that really, you know, turned off a lot of these youths. And they said, you know what, that's, I don't have an ID or I have what they're asking for, so I can't, I can't go through the process.
Anyone, um, here tonight have any questions? For Steven or for Sergio? City Clerk, do we have anybody on Zoom who would like to ask any questions? Our presenters?
Hi to the callers on the line. Please use star nine to raise your hand, or if you're using the Zoom app, please raise your virtual hand. Did you see we had one caller with their hand raised at this time? Mrs. Delgado?
Yes, hello, good evening. Thank you. Victoria Delgado, two zero two nine Alton Street, Salma, California, nine three six six two. You know, I was listening, uh, with just great interest because, um, we, um, have had this in our own family, and a lot of times people are, young youth are influenced by other young youth. And what I have learned as a young teenager with some very rebellious sisters is that you have to do things to help them, like, um, teaching them to volunteer, having them write letters to ask for help from other leaders. Um, using, back then, we didn't have any platforms, so to speak, except, um, at juvenile hall, and there were churches that would visit a lot of the youth there. And then we had to also learn to give them a role in society and to teach them how to inspire other people and to join other people and to teach other people because youth are very, very powerful. And they can really launch a campaign, they can do a lot with social media now. And, um, they can reach the representatives by writing to them and asking the representatives what they want them to focus on. In other words, you teach the youth to tell their representatives what they want to see in the city, and I think that those things are missing right now. And you also have to teach them how to think completely out of the box. We have to stop this stagnant, old-guard way of doing things and start being innovative and creative so that we can see change and things flourish. My sister was given up to the state at the age of thirteen. She was an alcoholic and she was a drug addict. I used to come and search for her with my parents in the middle of the night. I was working at the DA's office at the time. And let me tell you, it took a lot for us to, to help her. She ended up working at Chadwick Prison as a social work supervisor, and she has a master's degree. But it took a lot out of us to help her.
Delgado, thank you very much for your comment.
You're welcome.
City Clerk, do we have anyone else who would like to comment who's on Zoom?
Mayor Robertson, we have no further callers on the line.
Great, thank you. With that, we'll bring it back to council, and I congratulate Steven as well on your turnaround. Thank you for all your good work and staying. Great. Thank you. With that, we'll bring it back to council and I congratulate Stephen as well on your turnaround. Thank you for all your good work and stay in touch. With that, we will move on to the consent calendar. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered routine. The complete consent calendar will be enacted by one motion of roll call vote. For purposes of discussion, any council member may have an item taken off the consent calendar and placed back on the regular agenda. The consent, the remainder of the consent calendar will be voted on by the city council. Would anyone like to have any items removed from the consent calendar tonight?
I'd like item B to be removed.
I'd like item C to be removed. Our motion to approve item 1A. For a second?
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
My apologies, the microphone wasn't on for the person who made the first. Is that Councilmember Treheu?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Treheu?
Yes.
Mayor Protemcho?
Yes.
Councilmember Gara?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
Yes. Item 1B.
This is just a question on the Amberwood. My, asking you Fernando? Okay. Just wanted to get some clarification again. Just because these maps are just so hard to read, I, I can't, I can't even read them. But I just want to make sure, just on the density of the homes. Now, this first map, page 33. It indicates the entire layout. Now, is this the total first phase for 270 homes? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. My next question is, can you tell by this map? What are the density of these size of lots? Because I'm getting a little bit of a concern in regards to Dockery. This kind of peach color. What size of lots are those?
So I don't, my packet didn't print out correctly, so I don't have that map in front of me. But I, I do know that the homes over on Dockery are primarily 4,000 square feet. There, they might be four or five feet, square feet under 4,000. So I think a few of them are 3996. But for the most part, they average about 4,000. And we do have the applicant on the line and, and they might be able to confirm that for me. Looking at, on the west side of that, that development, and, and yes, they're mostly 4,000. I think the one at the bottom there towards the corner of Floral and Dockery is about 5,000, but all the other ones are about 4,000 square feet.
Okay. And that's the lot size, correct?
It's a lot size, yes.
Okay. And then my other question is, are they going to build these homes? Just built them? Or are they building them as they get purchased by the customer?
That would be a question for Lennar. Jeff, do you have an answer to that? Jeff, are you there? I believe you're still muted.
Am I muted? Can you hear me now?
There you go.
Okay. Yeah, we're, we'll, we'll be placing the homes. You know, of course, we're going to build the models. And then once, we're, we're going to go from like one, you know, systematically from one end to the other to make it, you know, a, a nice streamlined construction process. But we will be opening up certain areas for sale. And we can either, but people are, are jumping on and want to buy them, then, then that's fine. But we're also going to be placing some homes that we want on certain lots. And it depends on how the market runs, you know, a year from now.
Okay. So possibly they'll have the option to, to choose a lot. If, say, they want to be on, I'm just throwing this out there, but on Dockery. And they want one of the larger lots. Will they be able to make that change?
If they want to be on Dockery and they want the lot to be bigger?
Right.
Well, they, they would have to go to the yellow or the goldenrod areas then. And those aren't on Dockery.
The lot sizes won't change. They're, they would be fixed here, but they can choose a bigger lot somewhere else throughout the development.
Correct.
Throughout the development, but it may not be on Dockery then.
Correct.
Gotcha.
So just a question, though, there, so this will be fixed. The, this chart right here will be fixed with a distribution of lot sizes and potential models for each of these lots. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Anybody else have any questions?
I had one clarification. On the resolution, I know that this was already passed by the planning commission. But on page nine, just to clarify, the, the total lot sizes, I'm not the lot size, I'm sorry, the acreage is 94.53. That includes both phases. And then this one is just the 55.1, this first face.
Correct.
Got it. Okay. Easy question.
Yeah, thank you.
I think we're good there. With that, we'll move on to the check register, which I pulled off. Item 77535, Central Valley Lock and Safe, rekeying a bunch of keys for different buildings. Is there a problem there? Or is it just, does that just happen once in a while? Or what's the purpose of that?
Those are fire stations. I'll say, there was a personnel matter that, that led to a decision to change the locks at all of our facilities.
Got it. So that was mainly involving the fire?
Right, at, at all of our buildings.
Okay. Thank you for that. And then item 77544, County of Fresno Dispatching Services. So is that for just, is that fire and EMT?
Fire, yeah.
Okay. That's just a quarterly charge like we always get. We're going to bring that in-house. Is that correct eventually?
As far as dispatching services go, we are looking at some options, but we have not discussed bringing that specifically in-house.
Okay.
There, there are a couple of ideas between staying where we're at, possibly looking at county fire. Or in the future, partnering back up with, with the police station in their new facility.
Got it. Thank you for that. Anybody else have any items they would like to?
I have one on page 67, check number 77575. Again, Montoya Law. I asked this two weeks ago regarding, was that our last payment, her last payment?
One actually got paid with the last register. It wasn't. It was for the month of May and it's for a half hour. It was the final one. I thought it got paid last time. That was my error. This is the last one.
Oh, that's it? No more bills from the Montoya Law firm?
Yeah. There, there was no activity in June that I'm aware of.
All right. With that, is there a motion to approve items B and C?
I actually have a question. Sorry. Page 66, 77523, the ambulance, American ambulance, is that a payment for the actual?
That's for the ambulance service. Yeah. American ambulance does the, a portion of this, the service. Some would do in-house and they do the other portion. This is the contract we'll be looking to end and bring all services back to the city of Selma in January.
And then I just have one other one. 77563 on page 67, there was an issuance of a check?
Correct. As you can see, there, there's a name change on there. It says Estates now. The individual that owned that organization has passed. We had to reissue that check to the estate.
Okay. That's all I have.
And he was a very amazing part of the city. He was the guy that fixed the stoplights.
Yeah.
What a loss.
Spoke very highly of him.
Any more? Okay. Um, is there a motion to approve items B and C on the check res? Well, the check calendar. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Gara?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
Yes.
Councilmember Treheu?
Yes.
Mayor Protemcho?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
Yes. Then we'll move on to our regular business. Consideration and selection of recruitment services for the city manager position. With that, I'd like to welcome interim city manager Jimenez.
Thank you, Mayor Robertson. And council members, at the last meeting, this item was pulled and I was directed to look at the bids that came in and to come back and make a recommendation to you. My recommendation today is that you authorize me to negotiate with one of these two firms for the professional recruitment process of the, of a new city manager. And I've looked at, we, we actually sent out informal inquiries to four firms and we received responses back from two. I've worked with both of these firms in the past. They're very reputable. In fact, their, their bid is very competitive. One of them is, is slightly more competitive than the other, but I will talk to both firms and determine whether or not you know, which one should be the one to represent us with your authorization. And then, of course, that begins the process, which is going to probably span, you know, a minimum of four months, I would say, I would think. That's been my experience with executive level recruitments. We would probably, after we engage in agreement with them, come and make a present, a presentation to you in closed session regarding the scope of the recruitment. Have an opportunity to identify, you know, what candidates we're looking for. And then, and then lay out the whole process to you, what that's going to entail. And again, usually, you know, what the search firm will do, will do the recruitment and then do some review and assessment of the candidates with the goal of narrowing down that group to a manageable size that for, for your, for your consideration and, and further inquiry and interview. It's, their process is pretty similar with both agencies or both companies. So I'm, I'm very confident that we're, we're going to be able to do an effective recruitment and, and recommend to you candidates for your consideration. So with that, I'll, I'll just again, seek your authorization to move forward and negotiate a service agreement with one of these two firms.
Bring it back to the councils. Anybody have any questions about the recommendation from the interim city manager? With that, does the, is anybody in the gallery tonight, would anyone like to make a comment at this time? Selection process. City Clerk, do we have anyone on the phone or on Zoom who would like to ask any questions or make a comment?
Hi, Mrs. Delgado. I do see your hand raised. Your line is open.
Thank you very much, Raina. You know, I am extremely concerned with the fact that the city hired a person who does not have the same experience, education, and requirements as our prior city manager. And it's very troubling to me because our mayor and councilwoman Gara were not even included whatsoever in the determination of the hiring. It appears to me that the Brown Act was broken. And as far as this professional services agreement, I've been looking at it in the packet of June 21st, 2021, page 30. And it says quite a bit about violations of the government code, section 1090. And it also said that this agreement is void. And the consultant will not be entitled to any compensation for services performed pursuant to this agreement. And the consultant will be required to reimburse the city for any sums paid to the consultant. The consultant understands that in addition to the foregoing, it may be subject to criminal prosecution for a violation of government code, section 1090. And if applicable, will be disqualified from holding public office in the state of California. Furthermore, on item three, under management, it says that the consultant shall have no authority to modify the services or the compensation due to the consultant. And I see many other items in this agreement that I do not feel that the person that was selected by the three majority is the correct person for this position as city manager. Nor do I believe that he qualifies to hire another city manager. A permanent person in a permanent capacity. Thank you kindly.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Delgado. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment on Zoom or on the phone? City Clerk?
As a reminder to the callers on the line, please use star nine to raise your virtual hand. Or if you're using the Zoom app, please use the raise your hand feature. Mayor Robertson, there are no other callers wishing to speak at this time.
Thank you. With that, we'll bring it back. Interim city manager, do we need, do you need us to give you a particular name tonight?
Not really. Just your authorization to negotiate with one of these two. I, I'll, I'll do the assessment, further assessment, talk to them and basically come back with what I think is approved or enter into an agreement with what I believe to be the most qualified.
Drill down on the details?
Yes.
From, from both of those two. Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second? That was a tie.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
All right.
Okay.
I second it.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Protemcho?
Yes.
Councilmember Treheu?
Yes.
Councilmember Gara?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
Yes. Item three, which is a public hearing item, is the adoption of the 2021-2022 City of Selma fiscal year budget.
Mayor, if I, if I can, I'd just like to make a couple of opening comments and then turn it over to Isaac.
That's good.
Obviously, I came in late to the process. I, I didn't participate in any of your workshops and members of the council too. I, I did go back and review the, the footage, the videos to get a handle on the discussion that, that occurred during the primarily two budget workshops. I spent a considerable amount of time with Isaac going through the document itself. And I'm, I'm happy to say that, you know, you're being presented a balanced budget. One that clearly is still reacting to the economic condition that we find ourselves with as a result of the pandemic. It's still, it's still, we're still, you know, if, if our projections come through, then, you know, we should end the fiscal year with a balanced budget. But, you know, there, there are indications that, you know, we could be looking at a, a recession towards the end of this year or beginning of next year. And all that has a, a negative effect on, on, on the economy and our revenue streams. So, but I think right now, we're just, you know, hoping that the trend continues and we continue to get back to business as usual. And hopefully, our sales tax and property tax will continue to come in as we anticipate. Having said that, again, my, my role over the last week or so was just to help Isaac out in any way I could kind of put this document together and, and I'll turn it over to him and he'll go drill down into the various line items if, if you have any questions regarding that.
Very much.
Thank you. Mayor, council members. So again, today, we have a balanced budget for the fiscal year of 2122. Just a kind of global overview. We've gone through these, these numbers pretty much in detail through the workshops. Again, at, at the end of this, if you're, you're welcome to turn any pages. You have any questions about the budgets. Kind of the overview, again, sales tax, we are projecting, although higher than what we estimated for the prior year. It's still a decrease from what we're seeing as far as our gains for this fiscal. A small decrease between two and 3%, but still readily a decrease. But do you see a, a projection of it increasing? Not a decrease in the next fiscal. But again, market factors and interest rates and things of that nature are always going to be a factor within what's potentially going on. So we'll continue to watch the markets overall and legal changes and things that come down from the state, right? Those all impact our overall budgets. So we'll continue to fiscally manage that. We do balance an overall healthy reserve. So that's a good part. We have maintained our fiscal policies within our 20%. There are some topics that we're going to be discussing about those fiscal reserves also as far as the, the APR that's going to be coming up. We still have not received the funds yet. There's still an interim guideline. So the actual final guideline has not been executed yet. So again, that's a, a topic for discussion on a later date. You will not see that within this budget. We'll have that, that communication and get further direction from council at that time. Some of the changes you'll see within the budget, there is a, a red line or strike through in some of the changes. It's really coming down to some of the items that came out of the last budget. It's really coming down to some of the items that came out of the last budget. Uh, adding the youth program and different factors like that that were approved during the workshop itself. Um, also just cleanup items, what we did is we actually changed one of the internal services. To a more of a lease structure instead of a capital purchase to be able to get us where we need to a balancing overall, so you will see that change in there. Um, the overall objective that we saw through the process, um, is being accomplished within this budget book itself. So at this point, I think we'll open up to questions and, or through the document, and again, we'll, we'll assess whatever you'd like to discuss.
I have, I have a question, I have a couple of questions. How much of our priority list, how much of our priority list is included in this budget?
I would say pretty much all of it, so we talked about priorities, we talked about homeless. I think one of the biggest ones we're not going to see, and there's going to be infrastructure, but I think we're going to have that discussion when it comes to the APR and what that looks like globally. Um, I think infrastructure is also being assessed, oh, in the streets format, where we're looking at streets projects and increase in our infrastructure in that realm. Um, we're having conversations about future development as far as growth within, um, fire and also the park as well, so.
In, in regards to the, uh, the priority listings. I, I, it, uh, forgive me, just, I, I thought we were going to go back and I, I know that we were talking about going back and having another discussion to kind of like. Bring it priority and bring it down a little more narrow. Uh, will these priorities have a financial number or are they just actually in the, in the, uh, in the budget as scoped out with? I guess just, uh, plugged in.
So in the, in the budget process, you, you take the vision in the which you're encompassing, again, using some of the ones that, they don't necessarily have a, um, a monetary number to them. More of an operational outline, for example, homeless, right? We make sure we allocate enough hours to, whether it's code enforcement or police, remember we had that conversation. We make sure that resource is allocated to make sure we take care of that time to dedicate to those priorities. So that's just one example, obviously, but.
But it makes sense, it makes sense.
Example, another example, safety, right, we're increasing fire, we're increasing, so yes, we take that. Although there's not a monetary to it, there's the logistics and operations that go along with.
Well, that's the, that's the way you're including it of our priority list.
That's correct.
Okay.
And there were some that were monetary, like the, um, the, the reader board, right, that was monetary, that was included. So, but those are, those are minor, the rest of them go back to logistics and operations.
And in regards, and I know you just answered this question about the fiscal budgeting in regards to the, the Carizac money, the five point four million dollars. Any, any timeframe as to when we'll be, how, sitting down and getting a priority list, uh, so we can kind of get to the whole. Structure of what we're going to be, what we're going to be doing, the, you know, the A's and Q's.
Yeah, the, the objective at this point is waiting for the guideline to be finalized, because it keeps moving. That, I mean, they're having webinars and education every week because it keeps changing. So once that gets finalized, we can have those parameters that we work in to make sure that we move forward in a clean manner.
It keeps changing, but one of the main priorities that sticks in that change is infrastructure.
Correct, the biggest one is, is water and sewer.
Water and sewer, those are, those are number.
And broadband, correct, uh, so those parts haven't changed, the way you format and how you do those things is, is tweaking. But the, the overall major objectives are still there, it's just how you implement.
Thank you.
You're welcome. One, one comment before you go into that, just to point out, you did get a revision, um, there was a, a comment made prior to the meeting. Um, from councilman Vendoz and Baro, thank you very much, um, we had some last minute shifting. It was really just switching dispatch into the support area, so the FTEs did not line up to what was actually in the flow chart, the org chart. So dollars didn't change, it was just positions changed from one department to another. So you did get a, a change within that, your, your, your schedule's there.
And that's pages?
That's pages five through eight.
I just want to confirm again, Isaac, the staff that we've included for this budget is already included in this.
It is already included, there's multiple positions from all departments. I will say that after we do adopt the, the budget process, we'll be sitting down with department heads. And kind of looking at those positions with, with the interim city manager to make sure that we're kind of all flowing in the same page. So they won't quickly be executed, but they will be assessed again, just so we have that open dialogue. Um, and be aware too, we're still talking about MOU negotiations, so we're going to have to come back and do an amendment in some sense. Um, so be aware that that's going to come back at, at, at some point.
But you haven't received the final MOU or?
We're still in negotiation with all the groups, all the safety groups. I, I will say we're getting closer, but, um, at this point, they're not to a, a tentative agreement. But we'll update council once we get closer.
I have, um, a couple of questions, concerns, just went through as much as I could line by line. Um, I understand we have to pass it today, but as far as you did mention amendments, you know, due to the MOUs. Is that going to be requiring a, um, and maybe this is a question, that going to be requiring a, um. Like four, four, five vote, or I mean, what's the process to amend? To do an amendment, is it, is it, is it the majority, the four, four or five?
I believe it is, yes. So a simple amendment overall, you're coming back, you get the assessment of what's changed and that's the format.
All right, I, I was speaking with Mary earlier today, our, our city attorney. And yes, um, to pass your budget requires a simple majority and to amend the budget in the future would require a simple majority also.
Simple majority, okay. That I have, um, like I said, I went through line by line and I actually, that's how I ended up seeing that the numbers, that. The employees didn't match what the org chart said. And so it raised just, you know, more questions and, um, you know, I know that every department gets their line items. But some of the things that I, I saw were, you know, for example, cell phone stipends. You know, they're not the same across the board.
Hmm, each, each group has different amounts, there's different items for all of them.
A set amount for everything.
There's actually a rubric that goes along with it, there's some that are thirty, some that are forty, it can go up to eighty. So depending on the position, depending on the duties, that, that, that's, that's scope will vary. So there's not, you're not going to see a consistent number there.
Okay, um, the other thing was when I was actually looking to see, you know, some of these, um, uh. Positions, they may get paid from different areas, right?
That's correct.
So I just, do we have something that says this position gets paid, you know, we're a couple of hats? Do we know where those are paid, how much is the percentage? And, you know, for example, I know you wear a few hats, you know, and I think Fernando wears a couple of hats and, um, there's, you know, just every. There's just, I was going through to see, where can I see where these positions are being allocated to? And what percentage and, you know, what's the alloc- alloc- allocation?
I can get you a full list, all of them, in the, when we're looking at the sheet for the FTEs, it tells you other funds and the quantities. Um, it may not tell you the fund number, but it does, does tell you how many are actually allocated different funds. Um, the majority you're going to see here within the budget book, whether it's in general fund or streets, uh, or some of those other funds, the enterprise funds as well. Um, there's a couple that you won't see, which is like a COPS grant, just as some of the smaller funding mechanisms are out there. Where you may see a couple other ones, but that's about it, the majority are going to be within your budget book that you have adopted for, before you today.
But then those other funds could be like Me- Measure S.
That's correct, Measure S, ambulance fund, um, Pioneer Village, um, all the enterprise funds actually, that has some kind of layer component.
This is my first city budget, you know, I've, I've dealt with other budgets and so I'm just used to like making sure that everything is accounted for. You know, um, and if I need to account, like, like I said, for me, my experience is if I have a maintenance guy that's working at one property. Um, and he's there for, you know, a quarter of the time and then I have to charge a different property for another quarter. I just want to make sure that all the numbers are coming in with their allocated.
And it actually has to be done, I mean, a, a prime example is public works, right? We have certain staff members, we allocate them to certain funds, but i- in true actuality, they work in multiple funds all the time, all of them do. And so we had to do that true up and we, we had that conversation, we're talking about LMDs and how that scope works and the percentage factor. And we come back and re-audit and make sure that gets done correctly too as well. So when we're doing the budget process, we're really looking at, um, trends of what these positions are actually doing historically to get a true assessment. And it's usually about seventy to eighty to twenty percent in other funds.
Isaac, would it be, would it be hard to, uh, to, when you're doing the budget, to put that layer budgeting underneath the individuals? To tell us a percentage of what, what group?
Where they're directly allocated to? I, I have a list, I can present, I can put that.
I'm just saying for the future, so.
True.
But, but it would also give us a, a really good look at who's actually, who, where the departments are actually more being more.
Yeah, yeah, we can present that.
And then, um, there was, I saw a few of them that had like a building internal charge and then ins- insurance and general overhead. And then the data processing, some of them had them and some of them don't, so just, I know it's operations, but what, um, is it the building itself, is it?
So internal services, they all have their own little assessment or, or trigger on, on, on allocations, right? Some of them are based off of FTEs, some of them are based off for like data processing, it's based off computer components. Like who has a PC, how many is there, blah, 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 laptops, all that analysis. So each of one has different factors to, to assess where they need to get spread out, so that's how they get allocated out. So let's, for, let's say, for example, one of the departments doesn't have staff member, right, let's say, the attorney, right? They don't have data processing charges, they don't have the overheads, so they don't get those allocations, so, but the other departments do. So we use a mechanism to be able to spread that equally.
I just understanding, you know, the different, where it comes from, and I mean, I get, because we have IT, we have, you know, computers, we have all of that. So, um, it's just understanding this and I'm used to seeing, you know, if you have a position and it gets paid. From, you know, like seventy-five percent from the general fund and then twenty-five percent from another fund. But if that, that position has multiple assignments, then seventy-five percent, seventy-five percent, seventy-five percent doesn't add up to a hundred percent. So I just want to know like where the, um, the allocations are coming from, you know, so I think a list of. Where those positions are being allocated to, I'd like to see that.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, we can give you position titles and then allocate percentages, how that's allocated. We could do that.
Cause then that, that helps me to see, okay, well, salaries, how are those being paid, you know, are we, are we budgeting enough for those salaries? Are we budgeting enough for that position? Can we, you know, get another person in there, so, um, that's.
So the percentage allocation will give you kind of a, you know, how many quantities, right, how many FTEs? It's harder to gauge dollars, let's say PD, right, they have so many different positions with different pays. You can't just divide by twenty and come up with a rough number, but, yeah, you can definitely see that assessment.
Where that, um, schedule of salaries that you provided is helpful.
That's correct.
So that was good, and then just some of the things that I saw, it just was a very big increase in, you know, some of the, what we budgeted. Like for example, you know, for our human resources, legal services, when a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars was budgeted this year. So it went from one sixty-eight to two fifty, that's a big jump.
Yeah, you're seeing that float over from the, the, the fiscal that just closed and what, and some of the process, we know that are still coming up. Um, and getting that cleaned off, so we did increase it, you, you saw, you'll see a budget presentation or over budget in that department. Um, so we're just making sure we compensate and finishing off some of those tasks that are currently in the, in the scope right now. So we just want to make sure that we cover it accordingly.
It, well, it just, you know, on some of them. Have a professional service going from five hundred and twelve dollars to twenty-one thousand dollars, that's a concern, because how, what, what was that for? You know, type of professional services, there were some, you know, throughout that I was going and seeing, well, there was an increase, there was a decrease. And so I pretty much went line by line and some of these numbers just.
Especially when it comes to the professional services and supplies or whatever means, we actually have detailed sheets to support that, so when council has those questions, we can go through that. It's not included in your packet because it, it ended up being like this thick, right?
And that's fine.
I can answer those questions. But if you have, is there a particular apartment you want to look at, I can answer those questions for you.
I have a lot of notes. So I, I literally went line by line to see, and, um, maybe we could spend some time and look at it.
Definitely, yeah, I'll be happy to sit down and, and go into more detail if you'd like.
I, I need a lot of notes.
Yeah, that's fine.
Got some questions, um, like the one that we went, uh, we gave some money to the cha- chamber and the Boys and Girls Club and then Legacy. Where is that?
So the chamber is in the finance department, um, budget, and the other services are in recreation.
Oh, okay, okay.
Welcome.
How about the, um, the speakers downtown and the street signs replacement?
Street signs is going to, is going to be in the, um, the streets department, that's, that's part of those funding sources, we, we keep it to that funding mechanism.
Did we, we actually have a number?
For the street signs, no, he's still assessing that.
They're assessing it.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's going to be a phased approach is what's going to have them look like. It, it's, it's not just the signs, it's the logistics and counting the signs, identifying all the signs and going back and just re-scraping and doing all of them. So it, it does, it is a large task to get that done. And I, I, from what our conversations are with the public directors, is really we have to take a phased approach to try and get that done. So, but we are currently assessing.
Two years for it, you needed to do it this year.
We'll see how the first one goes out and how much they can get together and get done, um, we're going to have to, you know, outsource some of it, obviously. But yeah, it's really about trying to see what we can grasp, it's going to be the first time that we do a major rollout like this. Um, obviously, we take care of it as needed, but now we're looking at the city as a whole, so it's going to be a major project that we're going to have to go through. So I don't have a set time and how far we can accomplish it, I will say that we're looking at a phased approach, I would say no more than two to three years at the most. I, I think two, three years is actually pushing it, so two years most likely, but again, it, it's a phased approach and we'll get you a better number once we dive into it deeper.
There's just plenty of room, um, and then, you know, the sales tax is looking really good. I mean, it's gone from the target, I mean, this year is, um, seven point four million. And, uh, target last year was five point five million. So that's, that's a very healthy thirty-five percent increase there. And then the TOT, uh, probably because no one was staying in hotels last year. And other than the program we had here at the Super Eight.
Yeah, our T, our TOT is building back up.
Eighty percent this year.
Yeah, we're, we're projecting our TOT to go, to go up again, um, in this, in this budget, uh, not as much as we used to, we're usually around four hundred thousand. Um, I'm not seeing us there yet, um, but again, we could get, get a surprise like we just did with our current, our fiscal just passed. And the increases in our sales tax, so we'll continue monitoring that as well.
Great that we, um, we keep our reserves to a twenty percent, it's really good for a rainy day, it's very, I think, sound fiscal management. As well as the excess, as the interim city manager talked about, um, to go to the pension plan, which is always a, always a concern.
Yeah.
This year was good, but never know what next year.
Yeah, we're going to be talking about those reserves, we're going to talk about, um, the U, the UAL, um, and what those increments are. Um, when it comes back to the APR, just so we have a more global picture about our funds and how we can best utilize our money. Uh, to, to fit together, whatever council's direction may be.
That was one of our best policymaking decisions in the past years.
I am alarmed though by page one ten and the increases in, um, the city attorney and the city manager budgets, I wanted to talk to you about that. It looks like, and these lines don't really correlate with department zero zero, I think you've got to move the city council up one into department zero zero, right? Correlate with the one oh seven, am I right? Is city council budget eight, eighty-six, nine, seven, seven recommended?
What, I'm sorry, what page are you on?
Uh, one ten.
One ten.
Let me get there.
It looks like department zero, 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 zero budget is eighty-six, nine, seven, seven recommended.
That's correct. And city council's a hundred.
It's the city council, right? Or is the city council one sixty-eight, two forty-one?
City council's one sixty-eight, two forty-one.
Okay, and what's department four zeros then?
That is the, our general departments where all our taxes come out of, uh, what that is, is transfer out for our TOT, for our Measure K. That's going to the capital improvement parks, so that's the only expenditure that's in there.
The city attorney is going from one fifty to two hundred, is that correct?
That's correct.
And what's the reason for that?
Again, we're trying to reassess what our, our actual flatten out is going to be. Um, I, I want to be able to build it up so that we didn't get ourselves in a bind, we do have some higher bills, but again, we've assessed that. And we're, we're looking at getting that bound to manage it to more appropriate level.
Include the city's tax bill, the, the city's, um, previous bill of forty-five thousand for the legal representation in twenty twenty-one?
That was all in the past fiscal, that's all been expended already.
You're not budgeting for any kind of increase like that this year?
No.
Okay.
Standard legal services, obviously unless something else arises, then we'll have to assess it.
Gotcha, and then the city manager at three forty-eight to four thirteen, that's not all salary, what's, what's entailed in that?
Well, when it came to this, the city manager's position, we, we had to re-scope it a little bit, that was one of the changes we did. To take into a factor of the interim contract as well as potential for the new hire. So what we did is we allocated, uh, six months for interim and six months for city manager.
And that included the, uh, agreement with the previous city manager?
That, that does include that as well, the five months.
And how about the search for the new city manager?
I believe I allocated that to the city council's budget, professional services. I believe I put in city council.
Yeah, yeah, so if you look at page one thirteen, item, line item six hundred, four hundred, zero, 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 professional services.
Yep, that's it.
Thirty-eight, five, so what's the difference between recommended twenty-one and twenty-two and requested twenty-one?
So request is where we actually started within the budget process, um, so you'll see some strike throughs on where those items were changed, but some of the numbers didn't change, so. Well, you, you're kind of wa- watching that flow as we go through the workshops and make adjustments, so. So the recommended is what we'll do.
The other way around, because, you know, the people start out, you know, wanting a lot more at their departments. And then after the negotiation process, that goes down. In this case, it looks like it went up a little bit.
Yeah, for this one, because it was a new contract that we were not planning for. We had to increase it for that. We had a thirty-five thousand dollars to make sure we cover a high estimate of what the proposals came out to be.
We have a contingency built into the budget for the MOUs. They're gonna be finalized just in case.
We're gonna have to come back and do an amendment. Those dollar factors will offset, will have to be assessed depending on what that agreement comes out to be. And so we'll be looking to amend something to be able to compensate for those changes.
Just as an editorial note, this is my first budget in nine years where we didn't, we didn't have it nailed down on July.
That's correct. This is the first time that I've been here and we haven't been able to block down negotiations. No, I think it was really just a late start. We started back in April and some of the meetings got pushed out. So, yeah, this is the first time I've adopted a budget and had to come back and do amendment.
For all your hard work on getting all this together and having all the meetings. And I do appreciate the liners, the department descriptions and what each department.
All the narratives.
And what they did, thought that was a very nice part that the previous city manager came up with along with the assistant city manager to make this part of the budget. Makes it more understandable from where we came, what we wanted to happen and what actually did happen.
So you can see a lot of change within the budget process and as well the budget book from just me starting here, right? It went from short pages to a lot more detail, a lot more analysis, a lot more, you know, what was your actual, what was your current and what's your projected? So you're seeing a lot more depth get into the budget. The budget's a working document, right? There's a lot of best practices, but it's really about what it works for the city. You get too much detail in there and you're just flooding it. It becomes a useless document. What I need is a workable document, right? Something that the department heads, staff can look at and reference to and get the information they need as well as the public. So that's what you see here today. It's always a working document.
My last question, I'm sorry, just one more. Page one-twenty, page one-twenty-seven, the Central Valley Training Center. The Assembly did not fund high-speed rail. I don't know if that means the federal government will be and picking up the slack there. But what will happen in the Central Valley Training Program?
So we have a two-year contract currently, right? So the first year is all classes and the second year is all follow-up. Right now, we're not getting any indications that that's gonna be pulled for any reason. But I will say a majority of our expenses have been accounted for through the training program part. And that does kind of fall off and just to the follow-up and management, case management. But right now, we are still talking.
One more class?
They're in the, they're in the last class right now. But we are talking with the high-speed rail right now and they are projecting to try and guess the budget for our allocation so that we can hold more classes. Obviously, they gotta go through their budget process, though, but we're having that conversation now. And they're not giving me any interkiner that that won't go through, so.
Thank you. That's what Trillo.
Yes, so, you know, and I'm happy that you're you're doing some forecasting because I know that we get into the, you know, the weeds and I know things, you know, we approve things a year and a half ago and we're still bleeding out. We're still, we're still having attorney fees that are carried over. And then it looks like we have a lot of attorney fees for this year, but we're actually carrying it over. So you're telling me that the attorney fees for the litigations that were in the past are 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 closed out and we have no more or we're carrying, we have a, we have a forecasting. We have some forecasting in there factored in there to take care of it. Because it's, it's still, we have from a year and a half ago litigation still going on. And what I'm wanting to make sure is that we do have some built-in forecasting for that, right?
That's correct. On the HR component, that's correct.
That's what, and that's where we're stemming from some overabundance of expenditures.
That's correct.
And we want to make sure that we understand when it started and we're still following. So with decisions we make a year and a half ago, we'll also carry over for a year to three years. And that's what we have forecasting in that. And I appreciate that you you brought that up about ten, five minutes ago. And I smiled because it's something that's, it's very important and I'm happy you're carrying that. I also am happy that we, a year ago, we set a policy that we had twenty percent, you know, to our reserves. But we also need to understand that sometimes decisions we make a year and a half ago, they still carry on for the next three years because we have litigation and we have to pay that. It sounds like we have litigation that occurred right now, but it's actually a year and a half ago and we're still paying it. And I appreciate the fact that you're actually putting it on the budget, so we have some forecast. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Hey, one more thing on the TOT. Hopefully, the the players and their families from the baseball will be able to increase that TOT if they stay here. If it's seven days, right? They're coming for seven, yeah.
Yeah, that is a large factor for TOT. They will be staying in our hotels, eating in our restaurants, going to our Walmarts and things of that nature. So, yeah, a major event like that, that state, that league is what their event's gonna have. That does have major impacts to our overall economy, right? Same thing with major football games or out-of-state things that it may transpire with even just around us. Think of the Tulare Farm Show. We get large TOT impacts because of an event that's, you know, down the freeway quite a ways. But we have to assess all that and how that market flows because they do impact our market.
Factor in that New Hampton Inn is gonna help as well.
It will. It will.
Okay, do would anyone like to weigh in? In attendance tonight, would anyone like to make a comment on the budget? Step forward.
Jim Avalos, seventeen oh-one Dinuba. On this fiscal budget, the reason why I'm here is on this issue, there's some issues here that look concerning me a little bit. You know, and the budget, you know, we want to be, we don't know what to expect on the next round as far as this pandemic situation as well. But also, at the same time, the areas that need help more, and I don't see it in this budget, is in the public's works, they're gonna need some more man-hours because of the homeless issue that is, and that when I say homeless issue, that sooner we're gonna increase when they leave the hotel. And the fire and police will assure the responsibility as well, putting out the fires and issues that are taking, responding to the issues. And I feel that we should, you know, not think about, you know, ourselves so much up, you know, up there, you know, as far as interim, how much money, city attorneys and and city councils. We should worry about prioritize, get our budget in line, especially with the police department. Their communication and a new police department is well-needed right now. There's no communication in that area right now, so we're running off the old building right now. And those people in that old building should be, should be out there because we have some chemical issues in that building. So we don't want anybody to get sick down the future. So it's very important that we move our diligent ways to get these people out of that area into the police station and get the right equipment and for the future. Because it's gonna take money, guys. And and also, like in the finance department, there's a shortage in the finance department. It's a guy short in financing there and the finance, public works needs some help. And also, our city clerk needs some assistance in helping her do her work because a lot of work is being done in Raina's job and she being multitasked to make sure that everything is taking place for us here right now. But also, I feel that we should just step back a little bit and kind of prioritize, you know, the areas that we really need right now, not about ourselves. It's who we need to help our city get back in line, okay, guys? Because it's very important right now. Because right now, this is the big time and a step up to the plate. It's, you know, as a formal city council government, we went through the hard times. I made a, I made a drastic measure way back then. I took a pay cut. I told my council peers to take a pay cut. You know what? And they did it. We led by example because if we're gonna be in the same boat, we gotta lead by example, you know? That's the way you gotta be, man. If you're not, if you're gonna put yourself up here, you're not leading by example. You have to step up to the plate and help your peers and help the city of Selma move forward in the right direction. That's all I gotta say.
Appreciate your comments. And with that, I was remiss in not opening the public hearing to the public. We'll open retroactively. And thank you, Mr. Avalos, for kicking off our public hearing tonight. Would anyone else like to step up and be heard on the budget for twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year? City clerk, do we have anyone on the phone or on Zoom who would like to? If you get this time.
Hi, Mrs. Delgado, I did see your line, your hand raised. Please note your line is open.
Thank you very much. With Ross coming in, Wingstop, Dutch Brothers, Western Dental, Walmart expansion of the groceries, The Naughty Chicks, Domino's on Witson, Hampton Inn, American Tire Depot, Valley View Phase Three, Eighty-seven Houses, Amberwood Phase One, Lennar, two-hundred-and-seventy Homes East Floral, the Josan Hinesley Mixed Use Homes and Second Street Gas Station on Young and Second Street. Not to mention all of the other businesses that have filed all of these licenses to open businesses. I think those businesses deserve your time, your energy. And the city manager needs to go out there and get some more businesses and make sure that we are, in fact, attracting more businesses in our town so we can have nightlife, so we can revitalize downtown, so we can have nice parks, so we can have green spaces, so we can have all of these things that we want to have in our city. We cannot possibly have them when we are paying out special meetings, paying out for attorneys, for fees of city council members that should be paying their own attorney fees and not placing those fees upon the public illegally. And furthermore, the fact that we had a specialist in budgets, Dr. Jaclyn Ryle, PhD with goals and priorities. Well, golly, you guys get with the program. You guys should have this budget down and we need to be working right now, not diddle-daddling. It's time to get it on. You guys are a slow motion and we need the city to grow. We want and we demand that our city be a good city, an operating city, an honest city for all of the residents here. And shame on you guys that are voting to pay a city manager sixteen thousand five hundred dollars a month. Shame on you guys. How dare you do that to us, earning thirty-three thousand three hundred dollars a month? Shame on you. I am so disgusted, this is so despicable and I will not tolerate it. Furthermore, if you go to all of these violations from the FPPC.
Thanks very much, Ms. Delgado. We have to move on at this time. Thank you. City clerk, do we have anyone else like to make a comment?
To the other caller on the line, as a reminder, please use star nine. If using your Zoom app, please use the raise hand feature. Mayor Robertson, we have no other callers on the line. We shouldn't speak at this time.
Thank you. With that, we will close the public hearing and bring the item back for the consideration of the Selma fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two budget. Back to the council, would anyone like to make any comments? Or would anyone like to make a motion at this time?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Trehu.
Yes.
Councilmember Gara.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro.
Yes.
Mayor Protemcho.
Yes.
Mayor Robertson.
Yes. With that, we'll move on to departmental reports. City manager, Menes.
Now, I don't have much to report on other than I've received a warm welcome by all the department staff and department heads. And I'm working diligently with them to make sure that work continues and progress continues on the various projects that we have. I did want to note that the Caltrans reached out to us and the Fresno County Rural Transit Agency asking for a letter of support regarding the, what they call the RAISE grant program, which is a very intensive program to look at various transportation issues related to the city of Selma. Selma is one of the project areas that they're looking at. I did sign a letter at the request of Mayor Robertson. He asked if we can engage with them and we did show a letter of support and that went out last week. So that, I have no other things.
If I could just interject, I don't know if we got lost a little bit in translation, but usually when we do letters of support, we put in front of the council. We put it on consent in the future. If we could just put it on consent before we sign, you know, on behalf of the city.
Yeah, I was, I was informed that the practice is to have the mayor sign that because that was my thought, too. Maybe we needed to get that.
Absolutely, that's what I was hoping that we could do and let's do it in the future, right? All right, sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Interim City Manager, and welcome.
Thank you.
Appreciate your, all your work. And with that, we'll move on to our city attorney. Yeah, there, it's Jackie Garcia back there.
Said it's, oh, there we go. Okay, so let's do this again. I'm signed up for the League Conference, September twenty-second to the twenty-fourth, and it is in person. So I'm encouraging people to go. And I also have a donation for the Little League.
Great, thanks for that. Community Development Director Santian.
Thank you, mayors and members of council. Just a quick update, July fourteenth, we have our zoning ordinance open house from twelve to two, which will be a Zoom open house. And we'll have breakout rooms available for anyone who's interested in attending. And we're marketing that out to the community as well to maximize our attendance. Thank you.
Thank you. Assistant City Manager, Finance Director, Isaac Moreno.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. I do have a short presentation for you. This will be our third quarter budget update. This is our standard presentation that we give to you quarterly, kind of give you an idea of where our financials look like for our general fund as well as the enterprise funds. So I will go through that now. Okay, so again, this is third quarter budget update. We'll go through, we'll go through different factors. The general fund, we'll be looking at budget versus actual. Key factors as far as revenues, expenditures, Measure S, as well as our enterprise funds. So the first department we'll look at is gonna be the general fund. So the fiscal year of twenty-twenty-one, which is just concluded, at the three, at the seventy-five percent marker, you have about fourteen point seven million. Or actually, the total budget is fourteen point seven, where third quarter you'd be around eleven million, just seventy-five percent. That includes the budget impact that we approved for fifty-three thousand to hire additional officer or that fiscal. Revenues, expenditures, and estimates are factored in, some franchise fees, taxes, professional services, just to make sure we have an overall estimated budget for that full three quarters. So if the revenues in the general fund, again, as a seventy-five percent of the marker, we're currently budgeted for eleven million. Actuals coming in about thirteen point four, a variance of two point four million. So you can see that what a great indicator of what our sales tax and items are coming in for building and things of that nature. Your revenue stream, where you're projected for the fiscal year, you're already at ninety-two percent at the third quarter. So you're seeing a very strong growth within those departments where we thought, and statewide, obviously, thought that we're gonna have a huge dip. Were able to still maintain our car sales. Although they did dip, they were able to come back faster than we initially projected. And again, this is where statewide markers and everybody's seeing those projections come back. So it's a key indicator that we have a stronger fiscal year than we initially projected. So you'll see some good reserves come out of that, which, again, we'll talk about that at a later point. So key factors, again, department zero-zero-zero, which we talked about within the budget process, that has your property tax, sales tax, all your franchise fees. Sales tax at this point is estimated about six point two. So that's over what our projection will be at that point for almost seven hundred thousand dollars. Engineering, again, large impact overall. You see the improvements for vineyard states and some development coming through. So site plans and things of that nature are still being processed and permits are still being issued. Engineering is a good factor because a lot and majority of the key projects start there with maps and things like that. So if you're seeing a large growth in the engineering, that all starts getting into the planning as well as the building phases too as well. And we did see increases in those apartments as well. Expenditures, again, at the marker of eleven million at this point, ten point nine. So again, we're pretty much right on track. So again, we're pretty much right on track. So that's 75% of our overall budget. So again, expenditure wise, we seem to be on track. And again, key indicators when it comes to our overall expenditures is really about labor. I mean, 60, 65% of it's labor. So as long as we're budgeting accordingly, make sure staffing levels and managing our budgets in each department appropriately, you'll be able to see a strong stabilization of expenditures, unless there's some outlandish marker that may come out. Human resources, we talked about that through the budget process. It is for this fiscal, again, planning for it in the new, the new budget cycle to make sure those items that are going to continue over, that we have enough funding sources to be able to look at that and make sure we can stabilize it and balance it. So city attorney, again, we've discussed that factor. It has increased about 117% at this point. So that brings us to budget estimate gain about 2.5. You're going to see that a lot within the building planning department, engineering, as well as your sales tax department 000. So number, the numbers come in, they again, come in a lot stronger. We still have another quarter to go through, but again, with this number, you'll see a still healthy reserve come into our general fund and then we'll manage our fiscal policies accordingly. Are any questions about the general fund before I move on? Okay. Measure S, again, using a marker of 75% of your overall budget. So that's a budget of revenues at 1.2, actual 1.7. Again, seeing strong increases in sales tax on our measure S as well. So a variance of 467,000. Expenditures, again, budget 1.2, actuals 1.2, almost exactly where we estimated at with a variance of 5,100. So again, managing our expenditures but seeing our growth within our revenue streams. So that leaves a positive net gain estimated for 483,000 for this, for fiscal year 2021. Okay? Again, sales tax just coming in a lot better than what initially projected throughout the state. Enterprise funds, we'll start with the ambulance fund. We have a budget at this point of 4.1, actuals 3.5. We estimated within this analysis of the IGT, which is large payment that we received, at 75%. Expenditures is pretty much on track as well. We are seeing a net loss within this department for this, for this overall three quarters, but I have already projected out for the end of the fiscal and we've looked to be balanced, if not a small gain. So you're seeing stronger within the last quarter for the revenue streams coming up, coming in and picking up some of that, that loss. Our IGT came in a lot lower than we initially projected. I think a shortfall, close to 3,000 to 400,000 short. So we saw that pickup in other departments and other funds to be able to cover that. So that was a positive overall net gain, potentially at the end. Not a large gain that you've seen in the projected years, but again, probably a balance, if not a small gain. Okay? Pioneer Village, pretty much on track as well. Budget 33,000, actual 21. These are the other departments you're going to see impacts overall due to COVID, right? They're, they're venue driven and they're, weren't able to bring in the revenue streams because of it. So your expenditures are still hard costs. You can't change utilities overall. While they do decrease, but not to the extent where there's a large factor. Water doesn't change, maintenance doesn't change. So those all hard costs still get allocated directly out whether they have something or not. So they're still going to maintain and see a loss. They do have some overall reserves, but at this point, they are going through it. Again, we'll have another conversation about this and how we're going to manage this fund as well as the, the arts fund as well, because you'll see a lot, a loss in that department as well. But I think I can put something together to, to show you how we can get them back to where we need them to be. Okay? Transit, you're all, this is the contract with the Fresno County Rural Transit Authority. Overall, you look to be on track with a positive gain at the third quarter for $62,000.
You'll send it, you'll send us this report tomorrow.
I will send you this report. Yeah. Yeah, I prefer to send you a report. That way you have the details and not have to make all the notes, so. Yeah, we'll send you this report tomorrow morning. Cultural arts, again, you're seeing a budget of 121, no venue. I mean, you're just not going to be able to manage it without some kind of revenue coming in from rentals and things of that nature and different playwrights. So your net loss for this apartment is about $15,000. Overall, considering they really haven't been open at all, I mean, that's really not too bad. Considering their hard costs are really, are still there. You've seen the director as well as Nicolet taking some harsh strides and try to go virtual. So they are bringing some revenue in, just not to the extent where the art center is always rented out. There's always play coming in. So they've been making some changes and really assessing what they can and making these virtual to have classes and programs and events as much as possible. So they really had to re-scope what they do. That concludes my presentation. Is there any questions?
Great presentation. Thank you for that. It's very detailed and simplified. Love it.
Thank you.
What kind of impact did the Wayfair decision have on sales tax revenues from?
That was part of why we had such a big increase as well.
So we're getting more and more from the internet.
So the Wayfair, you were getting more and more from the internet. What it does, it's kind of the good thing about Selma. Wayfair is a major impact, but Wayfair also goes to the county pool. It doesn't go directly allocated to us the majority of the time. So what happens is the way you assess the county pool is how much sales tax each city comes in. That's how they kind of give you your increment. So the more sales tax you bring in, and since someone does bring in so much, you get a bigger piece of that county pool.
Well, if we account for 21% of the sales tax countywide, we get 21% of internet sales tax.
Of the, of the county pool. So it all goes into one pool. There's different factors that go into the county pool and then it gets allocated out to the rest of the entities.
Everybody's got that right. Wayfair was a court decision against South Dakota.
It's a decision for online sales. They've showed that we're capturing that sales tax. There's some parameters around it. Like if you make so much, you don't have to, depending on what that number is, but it's the only caption those dollars, especially like Amazon and things of those nature. Make sure we're, we're getting those out, those allocations back into the state and we're collecting those taxes from outside sales. So it was a large impact overall. So again, that's, you're seeing that as a factor within our fiscal for that year. Yeah.
Thanks. With that, we'll move on to our Public Director, Public Works Director Shane Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Nothing to report at this time.
Thank you, Shane. Fire Chief Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I just wanted to give you a brief update on some numbers from our fireworks task force over the last week. You got that slide, Raina? I'll just get started, but our, our task force ran from June 30th through July 4th. We had extra staff on duty every night covering, which consisted of fire, police, and code enforcement. We totaled 208 staff hours. Those were extra hours, did not include on-duty staff that were working within patrol and, there we go, within patrol, MPD, and the on-duty staff in fire. We did issue 45 of the administrative citations. That's based off the new ordinance and seven health and safety citations, which are actually criminal misdemeanors. So the seven health and safety citations, those are when officers were actually able to witness somebody lighting it off. So they were able to then issue a criminal misdemeanor citation and the administrative citation. And then we also did assist, we did not have any significant fires within the city limits, but we did assist Fresno County with four fires, mainly in the northwest island out there in the Dinuba and Fancher area. So while it was pretty active still on the 3rd and the 4th, there was quite a bit of activity out there. We did note that it was significantly better. As bad as it probably did seem, it was significantly better than last year. It was loud. Yes. So we are, we're really hoping that this groundwork that we laid this year will lead to improvements in the coming years. Yeah, I.
It was, it went down at 10:30, 11:00.
Right. It did. So it was a lot of work. I really want to thank the Police Department and Commander Garza, Sergeant Alvarez, all the officers that helped out. Code enforcement Javier that was out there with us and is going to be busy the next couple of days mailing out citations. Our fire marshal was in every night assisting with our work and then all the duty staff that were on duty those, those days. It was a great team effort and look forward to continuing it next year. Thanks, Chief.
Thanks for your good work. Police Chief Cummins? Thank you. All right. Parks and Community Services Director Mike Kirchner. And he's.
He's absent today.
Okay, he's not going to do his report today, so that concludes departmental reports and we'll move on to council reports. Councilmember Mendoza Navarro.
I don't have much to report other than I'm really sad that I wasn't able to attend the Veterans Memorial, but I had a conference that I had signed up for months ago, so that's where I attended. But I did pass by and they did a great job. Everybody, you know, did a great job. So I commend the staff for that. It's a very patriotic and just a nice feeling, a nice welcoming to our city. And I did witness, witness code enforcement on my block area and it was about 11 o'clock. Right before that, I couldn't tell if there were gunshots or if there were fireworks a couple of times. But yeah, I just wanted to thank staff for all their hard work and, you know, the budget and just overall. Thank you.
Councilmember Trujillo?
I'd like to thank the Fire Department, all the, all the public works and everyone that's been working really hard this last couple of months. You guys have been working hard all the time, but just these last been really tough and you guys did a really good job. I, I was out of the country, so I was not able to see the memorial. But I did, I did vote on it and I was very encouraged and we did this and I'm really happy that it, it, it came because it's going to make our downtown look beautiful. There, I'd like to thank the Chamber of Commerce, the 4th, the 3rd of July. It was really, everyone told me it was a great event. That's a good, good job. And I just think that right now we're heading in the right direction. We have a good balanced budget and we, you know, we're, we're, we're setting strides. Two years ago, when I got elected, we started setting policy and these, these, these are for, right now it's becoming a reality. When we set policy and we have balanced budgets and we have earmarks and we, we set, it makes our staff to where it gets us elevated. And I, I, I welcome the newly elected officials coming in and really questioning our budget. And Isaac, you're right. Every time, the, the budget is fluent. It changes and it changes with people up here. And, you know, because these people, the, the council members are asking and it just makes us a lot stronger. With that, I thank you guys all and I have nothing else to say.
Councilmember Gara?
I'd like to say I did attend the Veterans Plaza unveiling and this was a very special day for our veterans and it was a, a special day for the city of Selma. This really made history for the city of Selma. And I was honored to be part of the historical day to honor our fellow veterans, our women, our men and women that are serving currently in our, in the service or, or just out of the service. I mean, looking at those veterans' eyes that day and seeing tears coming down their eyes was amazing. I mean, it literally just touched my heart and to see veterans that I know, family members that were there. My father-in-law and five of his brothers all served in the Marine Corps, along with my, my husband, which is my father-in-law's son, served in the Marine Corps. My brother served in the Army. So it was very, very touching and I was so honored to be part of that decision as well. And I want to say a special thank you to Elyseho Zuniga, Commander Elyseho Zuniga, that's with the Post 12 Legion. We got to give him praise for taking lead with this project because the veteran that I spoke to, Mr. Schaefer, that I'm sure everyone knows here in Selma, said he was so thankful to have someone that took charge. And I was glad that I got to see his eyes when they unveiled the statues. I mean, his eyes were like in tears. It was amazing. Also, a special thank you to Shane and the entire public works because they worked so tirelessly to meet this deadline. It, it was amazing. It was beautiful. We had people that came from out of town. I mean, there was people that came from other cities and said, you know, one thing about Selma, they said, we might have flags in Sanger, but you guys did it right. You put a statue. This is going to be here forever, which was very touching, you know, very touching. Other thing, again, I want to say a special thank you to Chief. The amazing job that you guys did on the 3rd, the 4th, the 5th. I mean, it was, I saw you guys out there. It was amazing. Thank you, Chief. You guys did a wonderful job. I mean, it was amazing. Yeah, it sounded probably like we were having a war out there, but let me tell you, at least they stopped at a certain time. So thank you. The other thing I attended was the Business Downtown Improvement Meeting. Again, those are, we're having another meeting, I believe, this coming Thursday.
Week from Thursday.
Week from Thursday. So. Eight o'clock. If any business owners or building owners want to attend, I suggest that you attend. Come and give some input because it's really going to make some, I mean, you, you can see what Selma's going to look like in the future and getting your input will be great. So I think that's pretty much it for me. Oh, and also the, I think I had the best seat in the house for the July 3rd, right across the street. I got to see that fireworks show and hear David Guile's band was amazing. So thank you to the chamber and every, everyone that was involved. That was a great turnout. Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, I'd like to go ahead and do a formal welcome to our interim city manager, Ralph Jimenez. Welcome again. I'd like to thank, they say, everybody that worked so hard on the 3rd, 4th, 5th out there for us. Thank you so much. Thanks, Isaac, for the budget, my first budget. And I was overwhelmed, but I, I'll get it. I'll get it. It's going to take a little time for me to figure it all out, but I will. Okay? I was also at the Veterans Plaza. I was so, that feeling there that day was so unique. Okay, it was like the unity of a city. Okay? You have all your veterans and you have your people that was all supportive, you know? And of course, Mayor, Mayor did a fantastic job as the emcee. But it felt so good, you know, just to walk around and, you know, I, I knew a lot of the, even the older veterans because I'm that old. So I haven't been a veteran, but I've seen them and I know the families. And it's just really unique to be able to walk through that, you know, presentation and be so proud of it. It's beautiful and it worked out really good. I did work July 3rd for the chamber and we sold tickets 5:30 to 9:00. The crowd was a little shorter than before, but, but people all enjoyed it. So you can see that we're starting to come back out and I think that is a start. Of course, we have the fantastic stadium out there and that we were able to use it. And I do have a short statement. It's, it's been a little hard on me. I did receive from a constituent some comments that was really kind of, I signed up for this job. Okay, so I am a public servant, so constituent can say anything they want against me. Okay, I think, like my decisions and don't like my decisions. Okay? But when somebody says something about my family member, which they did not sign up for this job, that is a line that should not be crossed and it had to happen. It's just, I just needed to say it because I'm sure all of you would not be able to set that around. Okay? When family members come in and they're, they didn't, they're not part of this job, you know, because we want to take care of them. But so to me, you know, I know our life is open and we're, you know, people can do whatever they want to do to us almost. And it's a tough round, but I think families are out, you know, that line should not be crossed. Okay? Thank you.
And I agree with, with that about family members. They didn't run, we did. And I also agree about the comments on our Lincoln Park Veteran Memorial. You know, we had a veteran, Stan Riggs, who used to live here and he's, he's mid-90s and these are such vital people and he, and he came by. I said, oh my gosh, it's, it's great to see you, Stan. You know, do you want me to get you a chair? You can sit here. He goes, what are you talking about? I'm going to play golf right now. I'll be back in a couple hours. These are vital people who helped, you know, keep our country free and I just love that spirit. And I really agree with these comments. It was a great day for our city and a great spirit. And just go over there and look at the people who are going through there. It's almost like there, it's a tour, you know? There, it really is a sacred space now and I love seeing that and it parts a seriousness and a, and a sacred quality. And I love seeing that and it parts a seriousness and a, and a sacred quality and a, and a beautiful significance to that area of our town and our town at large. Um, I attended the third of July fireworks celebration. That was um, really nice at the stadium. The chamber volunteers worked all day long. And they're to be really congratulated and commended for their, for their effort for that day and it and it and it came off really well. Um, thank you to Chief Gomez and Miguel Rodriguez at Caltrans, a great team um, for uh, removing. I um, got in touch with our chief, our PD chief about items that were left at the off-ramp at ninety-nine and floral. And it looked like it was getting groomed again for people to move in, just again, pushing the city to see how far they could. In this case, Caltrans, because it's their property and Caltrans responded legally, ethically and correctly and removed that in the right way. And we're looking good there. So I think, you know, it 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 happened in the best way and it happened because of communication and the spirit of partnership and everybody working. To make, together to make Selma a better place. I attended a webinar explaining a CalSaver program. Everybody should be. Um, have a heads up on this. If you're an employer of five or more employees and you don't have a retirement plan, you have to provide one through CalSaver. The state will do it, but you've got to sign up. Um, between now, you've got twelve months, but it's coming. And if you know anybody in that situation. Tell them to go on uh, calsaver um, dot com. Um, I attended that same downtown business improvement district meeting with Councilmember Garrett. Really, this is the formative time, really crucial. Um, I went to a cog meeting last Thursday, Council of Governments. Masks will still be required on the buses if anyone asks, um, until DOT changes their policy. So and a lot of people do not want to wear them. They have to wear them at this point. They're not being hardcore about it. They just have to follow federal guidelines for funding. The request for uh, qualifications for the maintenance facility went out. And that will be um, finalized by the board in, at the September meeting. So that's um, that's moving forward, the electrical grid analysis, which is really exciting. Uh, because you know, the, the state is looking to fund projects, electrical vehicle projects, and you look at that police department. And they're especially looking to fund brownfields and that thing is a, is a walking brownfield because it has so much asbestos. Just think, if we could get that place cleaned up with state money, turn it into an EV charging facility. And have it as like a parking facility or a, or a trolley or some shape, you know, it's all kind of nebulous at this point, but in the future. We could really turn that into an asset for our city and use that place that's going to be kind of fallen into disuse after all dispatch moves over. There is a lot of resources, there are a lot of resources out there to help change that, to help transform that location. So that's really exciting and I hope we can, we can jump on that. Um, finally, I was just um, at wondering, is there a council policy on fee waivers? We get a lot of people who come and ask us for fee waivers. Um, I know that, I think the council decided to grant them like a couple of years ago for up to twenty-five hundred. Um, but did we, in terms of Mr. Interim City Manager, maybe you could look into this, did, were there any strings attached to the organizations that asked for a fee waiver? Like, do they have to be current in the charity of regatable trust? Is there anything where we check on the status of these organizations just to make sure that. You know, the money's going in the, in the right places. And with that, we will move on to our last oral communications of the evening. Would anyone like to send us off tonight with some oral communications? Um, city clerk, is anyone on the line or on Zoom who would like to um, speak at this time?
Mrs. Victoria Delcado, I do see your hand raised. Your line is open. Please unmute your line.
Thank you very much, Raina. You know, um, the budget showed the sales um. Tax revenue and I think that Public Works doesn't need one employee. It should have at least two or three. And we can use that four hundred and eighty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars to do that. And we should be paying bonuses to all of the policemen and all of the firemen with the two million, four hundred and thirty-one thousand. Eight hundred and eighty-five extra pennies that we received with our sales tax. The police and the fire should add six officers, not five officers, around the clock. So that we do have public safety. And we need to increase all of their salaries. So that we are competitive and don't lose officers to other cities and we can pay bonuses. To our officers and provide some type of increment of increases. That will keep them and provide a longevity pay and anything else possible. So we have the best officers in the valley. Public safety is number one, so I think we need a task force to conquer all of the tweakers on the bicycles at night. It's a completely different city of Selma in the evening because of these tweakers who are stealing all the bicycles of the children. I think that our brand new city manager needs to write letters to the governor. To the president and ask for a brand new Selma high school like Sanger did. Sanger was in the same position that we were in and are in and the monies are there. It requires people to step up to the plate and to write. And to go to meetings and to go and beg for money and that needs to be done. So we too can have a number one high school and attract people to our city. Businesses to our cities and they will be here because we have the best looking schools and the best employees. In the school and in the city, everyone will want to work here and live here and be happy here. We need to increase the parks. There's not enough green space. We need to renovate the buildings. We need to have more historical respect of all of the buildings. And we have a one hundred and seventeen percent increase on the city attorney. It's going to go way, way up. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I neglected to say one thing, Police Chief Gomez, um, streetlights on Pacific Street, that we don't have any right now. And there are, there have been repeated break-ins at the trust company over there. Is there any way to step up patrols over there? They run, you know, twenty-four hours. Uh, but they're having a increase, a spike in vandalism and theft claims, theft issues. Yeah, they make, um, I'm sorry, pallet company. They make pallets. They're over in the industrial park. Yeah. And so they're experiencing a spike in theft and vandalism issues there. And I know we don't have lights there. Um, and is that an issue or a possibility in the future?
Um, so we're already getting that addressed. There are some poles and lighting out there that just never got connected for whatever reason. Uh, we've already opened up an application with BG&E to get that scope done. We've already put in the down payment. It's just, it's going through the engineering and get it all flushed out. So we are working on that. So we are working to get it lit up.
Thanks. Let them know that. Yeah, if you wouldn't mind just going by there and maybe chatting with the, with the owners there. And um. Einstein said, you know, if it's an idea that doesn't sound absurd at first, it's not a great idea. So think big, it's always good. Um, with that, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Make a motion to adjourn.